Tonight, we have Chief Tom Carroll here of the Chief of Scranton Police Department, along with Adnan Ansari from Muffelhahn, Executive Director of Muffelhahn. And I know that some council members had some questions concerning the funding of an upcoming study. And we appreciate, you know, Adnan coming in here, as well as the chief, to kind of give us some information about the RFP and what exactly the study is focused on and how it will benefit the Scranton Police Department in terms of being able to do their job more effectively. Chief?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having us. It was very important to me to come here tonight to make sure that we answer all of your questions on this. A lot of misinformation that was circulating, and we want to make sure we address all of those, because I'm a supporter of this, and I'll tell you why. First and foremost, our officers are out there every day, as you know, and we are meeting the challenges of 21st century policing. Our officers, our detectives, our supervisors, I'm very proud of them. Last year, I'll answer a couple of the questions that were outstanding. Last year, we modified our operational philosophy and realigned our staffing to decentralize our proactive policing. In doing so, duties of the former SID unit, or the drug unit, as you would call it, were absorbed by our street crimes unit. This model permits us to scale our resources so that we can meet the scope of whatever problem that we are addressing from the entire agency. We're not siloed right now. We have strengthened, increased, and maximized our participation in task forces with our federal, our state, and our county law enforcement partners. We now have the greatest participation that we've had ever in task forces combating the crime in the city of Scranton. Although we are experiencing a staffing shortage, we have not cut any services. We continue to rise to meet the challenges. And what makes today important, as we look at that, we are constantly meeting the challenges, we are constantly doing investigations and arresting people. To what end? Specifically, violent crime is the focus of ours, lots of talks about gangs, we meet those head-on, we arrest gang members all the time. But to what end? This goal is for a strategy, a crime prevention strategy, that looks farther down the road instead of just a community meeting or words, and looking to get some type of dedicated strategy going. We are looking, my goal is to, before a child gets into, on the pathway to violence, we are able to interrupt that cycle, we are able to get inside their lives before they turn to violence, before they turn to the gangs. We need a more comprehensive strategy, and I believe our partnership with Muffelhahn is going to be a step in the right direction for that. They're going to assist us with the landscape. What resources do we have? Do we have enough? Are there gaps? Are we utilizing them correctly? As the chief of police, I cannot answer that as a look beyond law enforcement. The root causes of a lot of these are simple, and they're, every day, they're in our face. And every day, the police department is asked questions about how we're handling it. Homelessness is not a crime. Substance use disorder is not a crime. Mental health diagnosis is not a crime. Having a membership to a gang is not a crime. But yet, these are the root problems in a lot of our society's issues. This is a community-based problem that requires community-based solutions. Our officers are out there every day dealing with these, and they do a fantastic job. What I'm seeking is some assistance from the community, and I don't know what that landscape looks like. The nonprofits that we are working with do an outstanding job. But what is the scope of our problem? Are they capable of handling all of it? I see it not. We are not equipped to continue along this path to be successful. It's not sustainable. So I believe that if we get a better look at our landscape, then we have a better idea of what we're dealing with. This is step by step. I will allow, I don't want to speak for Mr. Ansari, he's Executive Director of Muffelhahn. I'll allow him to give you a brief, and then we'll be happy to answer any of the questions that you do have concerning this and our future strategy for crime prevention. Sir?
Thank you very much, Chief, and thank you very much, council members, for inviting me over and giving me the opportunity to present to you what we are bringing to the city of Scranton. So my name is Adnan Ansari, I'm the Executive Director of Muffelhahn. Muffelhahn is an organization based out of DC. We have been working in the space of prevention of hate crimes and prevention of violence, violent crimes, and we have been working in different parts of the country, and also in the past, we have worked outside the country in this area. What we are, what we propose and what we are happy has been accepted is an approach for what is called primary prevention of violence. It's a public health approach. It is, and public health has three parts, primary, secondary, and tertiary. There's a lot of effort going on today in secondary and tertiary. Secondary happened when the person is committing a crime, and then the police would come in and, at that time, intervene to either arrest or prevent that crime from happening. Tertiary will happen when already the person has committed a crime, and then goes in the court system, et cetera, et cetera. There's very little effort in our country, and all over the country, there's a gap, in primary prevention. And primary prevention is an approach borrowed from public health, that all of society should be prevented from going down a particular track, and whatever might be the vulnerabilities, they need to be taken care of, and whatever might be the strengths, they might, they need to be strengthened further. So, and that has to be done at every level, including at every governance level. So in a city, it would be done at the city level, that, okay, here we do a landscape analysis and see what are the strengths in the city, what are the assets of the city that are really helping and reduce the vulnerabilities of the potential members of the community in going towards a direction which they would commit a crime. But also, what are the problems that do exist? What are the gaps that exist that might provide them more unfortunate opportunities? And that is what the landscape analysis will be the first step in doing that. That is what we will be able to collect all that information, and in that, one major sort of, an additional strength that we bring is we have big data for all the country. We have the information from every location in the country in one place, for all the demographic fab features, for all the public health issues, for all public safety issues, for economic features. So what we do is we, that brings, gives us like a springboard. We can do a very quick analysis of any location, and, okay, these are, you can prioritize specific factors or features. Otherwise, what happens in many locations is that, you know, the needs are multiple, and it's very difficult to know where should the location, the city's dollars be spent. Here, we give an advantage over that. And based on that, then we can focus further in doing that. What the data provides is, is it gives us what is happening. What it does not provide us is why is something happening. Once we know what is happening, then we come and work with the local stakeholders, the city itself, the organizations here, and the citizens, and we find out, okay, why did something happen the way the data shows that it has happened? And that, based on that collectively, then we can put together a strategy, provide user recommendations, that, okay, where you need to put together your, or put in your dollars, what are the service delivery models that are more likely to be successful here, and where the dollars of the city will give you a more return in the efforts of prevention of violence. So as the chief said, that when a crime, the police will come in when a crime is committed. But there's so many other social issues which are not criminal, but which can lead to later on, a crime be committed. And that is what, where we go upstream, we will see that what are those issues that need to be addressed at the community level and at a whole of society level, so that what's called the streamline of the, of what's going into the flow of the issues that are flowing into, which will go towards crime, we go further upstream and prevent that from happening. So it's a supply chain issue, which we stop that supply chain for crime to be committed. And that's in a very brief summary I'm giving you because of the short of sound, but I would be very happy to answer any questions you have.
Adnan, well, part of this study, is it going to be identifying strengths, identifying gaps in services that we may presently not have, that need to be addressed? Like, how will, once all of your work is done, it'll all be brought back to the stakeholders? So I would imagine the chief would be involved in that conversation. Who else might be involved in that conversation? Healthcare workers? I don't know.
Yes, certainly. Anyone who would be, or you would consider are stakeholders in this. It's not only the police, it's nonprofit organizations, it's the social, the social workers, it's the health, the mental health department, and every such, and even the economic development players. So anyone who, and every location has a different structure. So what we, our job will also be to look at what the structure is, who are the players here? And so we will be involved with, we will be involving every of those relevant players. So it's not any one specific sort of combination, it's every location has a different combination.
Gentlemen?
All right. Mr. McHendrick, let me start. First of all, thank you, Chief, for coming in. I think some of the controversy that stemmed from this group, this study, probably initially started with me. I did ask for a copy. I took a look at the group, and I saw that they had done an initial study, and Scranton was part of four pilot cities to do this study. With that being said, I look into anything, we're gonna...
Mr. Schuster, I don't believe it's this study.
Correct, correct. I'm starting, how this started. So I asked for a copy of the first study, just to see the quality of the work, what type of thing we're looking for here, is this someone to get involved with, you know, quality of work is what I was looking for there. I did get a response from the law department. The law department told me that I couldn't see the study. They let me know that they received the report. Initially, the administration received that initial report with a, let's see. So the administration received the report, it received an in-person briefing from Muffelhahn to place it into context, and then I'm going to skip forward a little, it says that "The report may be misunderstood, and the public, it may impact the public's view of the Scranton Police Department's community relations." That was kind of what, you know, heightened this here. We moved forward, we hired the group without seeing that report, and then we got into what the report had, had, you know, what was included in the report. The area expertise, and I think I said this to you at some point, you know, when I looked into the area expertise of Muffelhahn, it's domestic terrorism, targeted violence, hate crimes, school gun incidents, and domestic terrorism. So it didn't seem to fit what we were talking about when it came to doing a community-wide health and safety landscape, you know? And then, in the report, it goes on to show that Scranton doesn't have these crimes that is the, is the area expertise that Muffelhahn is in. My first question, I guess, would be, how did you arrive at Scranton to be one of the pilot cities of this project? Did Scranton approach you, or did you approach Scranton?
So initially, we approached Scranton. When we started the project, that report you have, this was, actually, this project started in 2020. At that time, we were requested to have a variety of locations, as pilot locations, in that it was a mid-sized city, so we approached several of them, and we were referred, after referral, and we came to Scranton. And here, Scranton, we ended up doing this approach for Scranton also. So we approached Scranton.
So you landed at Scranton, it was, what, Scranton, Philly, Newcastle, Delaware, and Connecticut?
And Third District, State District of Connecticut. So these are all three different, these are not cities, one is a small city, Philadelphia is a large city, one is a county, and one is a senate district. So it's different governance structures. So that was the approach, because it's an approach that is being, that was being tried out, okay, where, how does it work, and what level of governance is it most effective in?
And who was funding that study?
I'm sorry?
Who funded that study?
The U.S. Department of Homeland Security.
Okay, so the U.S. Department of Homeland Security funded it, and then you, as a group, you were awarded the contract, I guess, to go out and do that study for them, and then you had, did you have the flexibility to go out and decide which, like, you chose Philadelphia, Newcastle, Scranton, I don't know, was there was another one?
The Third Senate District of Connecticut.
Okay. So, and who did you reach out to? The administration of the city, the mayor, or who?
So we did reach out to the mayor's office, we did not reach, we did not have direct communication with the mayor. We ended up with, in communication with Mr. Chris Smith at that time, he was in the mayor's office, and we had the direct communication with them, and we were told that, yes, the city is interested.
Can you explain how this study will differ from the initial study that was done last year?
Sure. See, what this study that you have seen is, is for a different question, it's the process that is going to be applied. So the process of community resilience, what we call community resilience early warning system, as I explained, we start off with using big data and the relevant features of whatever the issue might be, that's the information we use. Using that big data, we understand what are the risk and protective factors. Any type of violence will have risk and protective factors. So we will look at those risk factors, then, based on that, then we, as I mentioned, we will be working closely with the local stakeholders. Every location has a different combination of risk and protective factors, no two locations will be the same. For every different problem, it will be a different one. So it's the, it's the process that is being applied. It's not, the study that you have referred to, that is not being applied, it's the process that's relevant here. And that's, the process is our skill. And earlier, it was mentioned about our own background and our skills, so...
I'd want to know more about that, I was going to ask about some of your qualifications and history, so, yeah, if you, if you won't mind answering that as well, that'd be great.
Sure. So in that aspect, when it comes to the violence, and you mentioned, Mr. Schuster, you mentioned domestic terrorism, and so the approach of domestic terrorism, of preventing domestic terrorism, that has been borrowed from gang violence prevention. Domestic terrorism is a relatively, in a way, the prevention of that is a new, new problem in the country, and there were no approaches for that. So we studied gang violence prevention to develop this process. So we have been, so we are very well-versed in that area also. And also, when it comes to gun violence prevention also specifically, we have relevant staff who, and partners who have experience of more than three decades in that specific area. So we, we do have that subject matter expertise, for sure. Now, where we have, we are known the most for is hate crime prevention and domestic terrorism, and now those issues are, so, just to clarify, domestic terrorism has now been addressed as more as a federal government-level problem. Now, when it comes to gun violence prevention, gang violence, that comes to local government-level problem. So that is why our work in the city of Scranton will be applying the same methodologies, but towards the issue of gun violence and gang violence prevention.
So you use open-source data, correct?
We use open-source data. What, one thing very important to note in this is we do not use PII, any personally identifiable information, we do not want, we are not a law enforcement tool, we will not be providing that, that we, that we give information to the chief to go and arrest this person. We are, that's not our objective. Our objective is that there are less and less individuals who are going towards that problem that the chief and his team has to have to go and arrest. That is our approach. So it's a very different way of...
Yeah, I mean, that PII piece is the piece that the controversy stems from, is intruding into people's lives, intruding into people's religious freedoms, things like that, so...
We do not, any, any database that would have that information, we have openly, we always, as a, it has to be anonymized. That's very clear. We will not have that.
So it does say, like, in your disclaimer for that study, that it's limited external contributions from the city. So when you did that, that other study, who did you work with from the city? It was just open-source data that you were looking at, those certain factors? Or was there anybody, like, a team in the city that you worked with?
So the report that you see is the first step in that process, and the next step would have been if we were to work with the stakeholders. As I said, this is a multi-step process. So the data analysis is the first step, and that's the report you see. That we can conduct for, we have the resources internally to conduct that, that study for any location in the country. We could have done that for Scranton without you knowing it even, but we wouldn't do that. We want the location to know that we are doing this analysis for you. But when it comes to the next step, that is when we come to the, working with the local stakeholders, of course, we would like, we, we cannot do it with the approval of the location, of the government of the location, and with the local stakeholders, because we are not, we do not have the knowledge of the history of Scranton, why things have happened in a particular way. We can tell you what has happened, we can tell you without any, I mean, for any, any place, we can tell Scranton what happened. But why it happened is that is what we then sit down and discuss with you, and then, because when you put together the what and the why, that is only when you can come to good solutions. Without that, solutions might be very, sort of, half-informed.
Yeah, now, you've performed other studies and things that I've seen. It does say you've worked with counties, mayors, city managers, things like that. Have you done any municipal work similar to what you're going to do right now?
So in, we, I'll give the example of Connecticut. We worked with Connecticut on that, with the Third District of Connecticut, that's the state senate, and we presented it to their Public Safety Commissioner, and with that, with them, we worked with them further. And at this stage, the state of Connecticut has come up with a solution, they have set up a new office of public health prevention of violent crimes. And it's a state-level solution that they have now come up with, with our, with working with us. So that definitely, that's something that we have done, this is something we are doing with other locations also, and we will be continuing to do that. This is, this is, as I mentioned, the primary prevention approach is very new in the country. That has not been done in the country too much, it's very new, and that is what has been, we and many other organizations are now pushing towards, that, as the chief said, the law enforcement is overwhelmed, law enforcement bodies are overwhelmed, we have to work towards preventing that, the work, the more and more work that's going toward law enforcement, and other parts of the communities have to take responsibility and get more involved, and make the, every community a better place to live in. And for that, it doesn't have to reach law enforcement, a good place will need less and less law enforcement interventions all the time.
Correct, I understand. I work with behaviors, and you have your primary structures, you know what I mean, the structure of the city, the structure of the classroom, you have your secondary, then you get to tertiary, which is actual behaviors. So I understand exactly what you're talking about. In here, it did say you worked with city managers and county managers and city representatives. Is the pilot program that you did in that initial crew study, is that the first you worked with municipal individuals?
Yes, in the report that you're seeing, that is, that is from last year. At that time, this was the pilot study, yes. So at that time, that's what it's referring to, the pilot study.
Okay, but that was the instance where you worked with municipalities in the pilot study?
In the pilot study, but in Scranton, it was only with the mayor's office we presented this, we did not work actively with their involvement, that we hope to be doing now.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so, I have in front of me your initial assessment, sorry. I have in front of me your initial assessment, or your initial study, whatever you want to call it, and I shared the same concerns with councilmen Schuster. We had to beg to see this, before we were going to vote on the contract that was sent down to us. That's unfortunate. I don't like to be treated like that. You know, how can I make informed decision on a new contract when I didn't see the first study? So that, I had a problem with that. So we had to beg to see it, I actually made a motion to get a copy of it as councilman. And we didn't even know about the first one. We had to find out when you were looking for a second contract or a study. So that concerns me too. So I did get to read it, okay? And you refer to the Cruz resilience early warning system, that was the initial assessment, and that's going to continue through with the stakeholders in your second round landscape, okay? So what concerns me the most, and I'll address the elephant in the room, within this study, and it's mentioned multiple times, I don't know if you have parents or grandparents that served in the United States military, I don't know that, or that were veterans, but I have, and I know a lot of people that have, that took offense to them being identified as risk factors and potential extreme, extremist or domestic terrorism. I said this a couple of weeks ago, that, you know, I grew up in this city where veterans were always cherished and honored, because they've offered to die for us and our freedoms. And to hear the words mentioned in any context with regards to being a risk factor for domestic terrorism or extremism disturbs me greatly. And I still have this report, and it's in there. So that right off the bat turned me off with this continued study, and if it's worth it. I'm always, I'm always willing to be wrong, I don't think I'm with this one. And I agree with Chief Carroll, we have a fantastic police department. I think one of the best in the state, if not the best in the state. I didn't hear you, I didn't, in your proposal for the second landscape, I don't remember seeing the word gangs in there at all. I think we teased it out at this meeting, but, and they're my concerns. So like, not being able to see the initial assessment and vote on a second one, where I didn't like what was in there, that's where I'm at. I mean, I don't have any other questions, unless you want to address this.
Sure, I would be very happy to address her. One thing, the fact that you did not see the first report, I have no control over that, so I cannot address that part. But when, what you're referring to, veterans, in our report, veterans are a feature, which they can be a risk factor or a protective factor. For hate crime prevention, it's very clearly stated that they are a protective factor. Now, when it comes to domestic terrorism, it's, if it's taken out of context, of course, anyone would take, should take offense on that. But in the context, what we are referring to is that veterans can be a risk factor if they are not provided the proper resources and support that they need. Our veterans have been willing to go and give their lives in other places. When they come back, they do not get all the services that they need, that they, that they should be provided. And that's what we are openly saying, that if those are not provided to them, they can become a risk factor. And I will address that further to you, and no one, none of us likes that fact what's happening in this country today, what's happening in our country, is that there are domestic terrorism groups which are actively seeking out veterans. And when, and that, it's not that the veterans are the risk factor, veterans are an asset to our community, to any community. And when the domestic terrorism groups are seeking out, why they're seeking out, because they're already trained, they are very well-trained in all sorts of combat, and that is the problem. And that is not a problem that I'm stating, that's a problem that the Pentagon states. It's a problem that the Pentagon says that this is an issue, and that is why the Veterans Affairs Departments are being referred to, that we need to take better care of our veterans. I, yes, I will agree that you've mentioned that your grandfather, my grandfather was not in the military, but I personally have spent a lot of time in Afghanistan with our military, as a civilian, in Iraq. I am one of the very few Americans who have been to the site of Black Hawk Down in Somalia. So, sir, I very well know what our active military has been, has gone through, and what our veterans, what they deserve. So if, if, if anyone ever comes to me that, oh, I'm saying the veterans are a risk, no, I am the first one who's going to stand up for that. My argument is that we need to take care of our veterans. And if we don't, then someone else is going to offer that... saying the veterans are a risk, no. I am the first one who's gonna stand up for that. My argument is that we need to take care of our veterans. And if we don't, then someone else is going to offer that service to them, and that can be the risk factor. That is our argument. So, we have to put things in context.
As a veteran, I do not take offense to this. This is realistic. This is fact. Our veterans are pillars of society, and they'll remain strong if they have the support. They are sought after. That's the fact. The elephant in the room was just proven. Why this information, if it gets out without context, without explanation, snippets will get exploited, like it has. When it hits the internet, when it hits social media, and it comes with commentary, and not professional context of those who wrote the report, that's where it leads to problems. And that was the preventative measure for restricting circulation.
So, with that being said, I do think the Pentagon and other agencies like that have taken hits for some of those things like that, that you just said. I do believe our veterans need the mental health, the physical health, all of that. And I think there's been some controversy about this stance on, say, veterans, religious groups, and other things. When the city is gonna spend money, though, should we not be able to review the quality of the work that we're getting into a contract with?
Of course. There should have been. Now, what happened, what did occur was that I did speak to three members of council prior to. And I did not, knowing that you're broken down into committees, I did not receive phone calls or questions from the other two councilpersons. And I would have answered your phone calls, I always do. I'm available for that. This is not a tit-for-tat. We can't have more than two in a room, and I assumed, and, sorry for me, assuming, that you're broken into, you're broken into groups, that that information would have been spread, and it would have been common knowledge prior to the vote. I thought that's the way it operated.
So, I don't think, I tried to be clear in the beginning, and I know I skewed my words a little bit, but the controversy that kind of came out of initially about receiving the report was more from the answer we received from the law department. The law department made it seem that we're not going to give it to you, so that automatically puts up red flags to me. As for the committees, I asked questions about this when it came into fifth order. I assumed that the administration got them. I was the one that initially questioned this, and I would have liked a meeting with you, but I felt afterwards, when I found out that other members had received the meeting, after I had been questioning it for two weeks, I thought that was a little bit odd. So, I will say, I found it extremely odd that the other three members that hadn't been questioning were called into a meeting, and I was not.
Upon their request. I did not solicit the meetings. I am available always to council.
And there are a number of things that we discussed in the meeting, like issues of homelessness within the city, that didn't directly relate to this contract. It wasn't like a meeting specifically just for questions on this contract, if I recall?
They're far-reaching. There are a lot of overlapping areas here, but if we are able to bring this to bear, and we are effective, this isn't a magic bullet. We're not gonna see these results right away. It's an investment for our future, and it will stem across homelessness. It will extend into the violence realm of prevention. And hopefully, you know, it's not a utopia where we're gonna make this perfect, but if we can focus our efforts a little bit as an entire community, not just the small sliver of law enforcement, but we have that strength then to influence, maybe it's one person's life, away from the pathway to violence, it's worth it.
So, what future updates can we expect on the study being presently done?
We have presented in the proposal, and that there'll be, at every stage, there will be an analysis provided, a report provided for that, and that you will get. But, if there's anything specific that you would like to see, we would be very happy to put together a report on that.
Is it, Anand, is it possible, before your study is completed, that, is there some way that you could come in and maybe brief council on that before it actually goes public, to just say, hey, here's some of the highlights of some of the things that we've identified in the report prior to it being published, maybe something like that?
Absolutely. We are totally open to that. We can provide you at the middle point of the study, and at the end of the study, we'll-
Sure. Yeah, that'll just help with some, you know, a level of transparency, I think, that the council's looking for, and shows their concerns, and obviously, you know, what everyone has spoken about here this evening. I know my uncle and my father are both on flags, hanging on telephone poles in the city, having served in World War II. We all honor and cherish our veterans. There's no doubt that there's groups out there that wanna target the vulnerable and the marginalized, and people who feel disenfranchised, and they're gonna target, they're gonna target the weak, just like bullies target the weak. There's no doubt that this country, this entire country, needs to do a better job to take care of our veterans when they come back from combat, you know, and post-traumatic stress disorders, and we absolutely need to do that. But, I appreciate your explanation this evening to help kind of clear the air on that, though.
Sure. And Mr. McConney also asked one more question, which was not addressed, if I can. You raised the concern that the term gang violence was not mentioned in our proposal. So, this approach is not for, specifically only for gang violence. It's for all forms of violence, including gang violence. Gang violence was not a request specifically in the RFP. So, our proposal is to support the police department for service delivery models, which will be taking care of all forms of violence prevention, rather.
Well, one of the councilpersons that met with the chief, came back and said, this is, we need it, it's for gang, so, that's why I didn't see it in the proposal, I questioned it.
And that's what I'm saying, that this, the study will be addressing all forms of violence prevention. So, it's not only for gang violence.
Okay. So, I think we could all agree about stopping someone from getting into a pathway of violence. You know, these are things that we know, we know, education, healthcare, things like that, our ways to do that. And I think that the techniques that you use, I think they're pretty much through everything I see on your group. CVE is called. What's the, it stand for?
CVE, Countering Violent Extremism.
Now, other groups that do similar work to you have kind of come out against CVE, correct?
So, then, that also needs to be put in context, because CVE, when it was termed CVE, no longer will the federal government use it at all, and in our country, it's not being used. CVE was, the term was being unfortunately used to profile a particular type of citizens, specifically the Muslim community in the country. And that's why it became, many groups who were, have become against CVE. CVE is not a term that is any longer being used inside the country, but because it was misused, unfortunately.
So, there is a new term for it, and the cruise study was a form of that?
So, we have, so, CVE was then what was doing it, was not, still not addressing primary prevention. We have gone further upstream and looked at primary prevention. So, it's not in any way, any form of any type of profiling of any sort. It's about looking at the risk and protective factors. It's not looking at a community, specifically this community is at risk. That's not how we are addressing it. We're saying, okay, what are the risk and protective factors in a geographic location, which might, which need to be addressed?
And that's when you're saying going further upstream?
Upstream, yes.
You said with the, is it PII or PPI, the personal information? I mean, that's where you get into that slippery slope of, we're moving up the stream to say, this person or that person could be a criminal down the road.
So, we are not doing that. That's exactly, specifically what we're saying. We will not have any PII. So, if there's any expectation that we will be able to address any individual, we will not be able to do that. That's very specifically, we openly say that, that we do not, we will, we do not store any PII. We cannot provide any PII. So, if that is an expectation, then we are not the right organization for that. So, just have the, just have that expectation that we cannot help in that area.
I have a quick question. We received email questions that the policy made by the rest of the night.
I received questions last week from residents, and I posed them to Mr. Bodenberg to send them over to you. We got a response today with them questions, saying that you'll report out on these two questions. Do you remember? This is from- I do. What are those two questions? From Catherine Kennedy. Let me read them again, just- Yes. To be clear. So, we want clarification, 'cause a few people have come up to me, and more than a few. Has the drug unit been disbanded? And has it been, was it a couple of years now, or for clarification, or is it disbanded? Yeah, I put that in my opening remarks for you. We did realign- Well, okay, that- We did realign our agency, and with the new operational philosophy, and the duties of the SID unit, which we call the drug unit, they have been absorbed by the street crimes unit. So, we're able now to flex. We've decentralized our proactive criminal enforcement. So, now, it's agency-wide. We're not siloed, and we could flex, expand, contract, based on the scope of the work that we are doing, coupled with our participation, our maximizing our participation in the task forces with our federal, state, and county partners. Thanks for that clarification. I'm glad to hear that. So, and the second one was, has there been a directive to the city detectives that to no longer investigate theft crimes under $5,000? That is false. Good, okay. I mean, it's out there. I thought it might as well- No, and that's why I may be sure, we do experience staffing issues, but we have not cut any services. Great to hear that. Thank you.
If there's no further questions, I'd like to thank Chief Carroll for coming in tonight. Anand, thank you for coming in and answering our questions. We appreciate that. And we're gonna take a short break before we begin the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.